All right, I'd like to call the Town of Acton Planning Board meeting to in order for Thursday, August 5th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes?
What's that? Yeah.
We got approved the motion?
I'll move to the approved minutes, the July 15th meeting as written.
All in favor? All right, next up is Mr. Jennifer Rue, talking about North Star.
Couple of things, yeah. So I'm here on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, Ed Walsh is here and Code Enforcement Officer is here. Hoping to have a brief roundtable discussion with you guys regarding the vote that took place, I think, two weeks ago about the use of North Star planning and just hope that we could talk a little bit about it and I could explain a little bit on our behalf and talk about the finances and purse strings and who has the authority. As you know, we've gone through some pretty major staffing changes since December. We have a new land use secretary that's doing a phenomenal job, a new code enforcement officer that already has seven of his 13 certifications, but there is a lot to this job and there's a lot to learn. When somebody comes into the office and wants to do a site plan review or they want to do a conditional use permit or they want to make changes to something they currently have going on, right now, we don't have the resources to either even make sure that we're giving out the right packet and the right information and getting you guys what you need. The services of North Star are funded through the Code Enforcement Office, which is overseen by the Board of Selectmen. It is up to the Code Enforcement Officer to determine with the approval of the Board of Selectmen how those funds are spent. Now, what I gave you in front of you is a copy of an invoice, one of the most recent ones, so you could kind of get an idea of what we see. Now, it is not our intention to have them here at every single meeting, it's not our intention to run every single thing by him, but if an application comes in on a Wednesday or let's say it comes on a Friday tomorrow after you have a meeting, someone comes in and says, you know, "We want best possible location on this property," and we don't yet have the staff training to know exactly what that looks like, the easiest thing for us to do is to send that over to him, let him review it, let him teach Ashley and train her and learn, "Okay, your applicant needs A, B, C, and D." At that point, let's put them on the next planning board agenda and let the planning board take it from there. North Star is certainly not looking to make any decisions on your behalf, but somebody has to be the middle person to help us get the administration piece done. If it's a project in town, we normally have escrows set up. You can see how they bill, I think that White Star is one of them that's listed on there. I mean, they're billing at the point thirty seconds, you know, thirty minutes. So they're very reasonable in their billing. You'll see some of the lines that will say general planning board support. That could be Ashley and I just calling saying, you know, "This is what our agenda looks like, this is what we're thinking," you know, just general questions. If we don't utilize them as our town planners, then it's going to be a land use attorney that we utilize, and that will be a decision that the Board of Selectmen make, not the planning board, because we have to, we need somewhere to go by. I mean, I may be your town administrator, but I don't have the training or background in this department and we can't just leave them out to dry. So the escrows are used very carefully, if you can see how he bills. And again, the services, the Code Enforcement Office has a line that has a very substantial amount of money. We plan accordingly. Mr. Paul always had, you know, over $25,000 in this line with all of our lines in the town. We budget and watch them carefully. We're not looking to have him here at every meeting, but we do need the support and it is the authority of the Board of Selectmen to instruct staff on how to handle things when they're coming in. So we're really hoping a couple of things will happen that will get your blessing with that and that you'll consider rescinding the motion that was made last meeting, so we really don't have to take the time to look into whether it really could have been made because it's a financial, it's not a planning board budget, do you know what I mean? It's not, it's not your budget to oversee. And we really are, you know, hoping not to get into that, we're just hoping that you could understand from our point just where we're trying to go with them. I mean, as Jason and Ashley get more trained in their position and training goes by and time goes by, certainly you'll see them using them less and less, but for now, we need those resources. If the motion stands, then we'll reach out to our land use attorney and have to get support that way, these applications that are coming in. Thoughts? Does anybody have any concerns with, does it make sense what we're saying to you?
It does make sense. Jennifer, did we used to use the Maine Municipal?
We didn't use Maine Municipal, Gavin, we used Southern Maine Regional Planning, which we, is that right? We used Southern Maine Regional Planning, which dues were still paid to Southern Maine Regional Planning. Why they changed it, the previous department changed it, I think it was because you had some big projects coming in town and he wanted, the previous CEO wanted more one-on-one. It's similar to Maine Municipal, you know, not to get off track, but Maine Municipal has legal services they offer us and we can call them and we can say, "How many days do I have to advertise nomination papers for?" And they'll give you a general answer, but if I'm looking to say, you know, "Can this selectman who owns an excavation business wear this T-shirt on Election Day?" They're going to say, "That's more town-based, call a local attorney." So I think Southern Maine was more general overall and I think that's why Mr. Paul made the original change, but that is true, we used to use them. But the rates are very reasonable and if you look at the billing, I mean, I certainly feel like they're good about it and they've been very supportive over these last few months.
Gavin, wasn't your concern that the party had expended a lot of money on the use of the consultant versus that the town had? Or did I misunderstand?
So our party's not, but our applicants do not correspond with our town planner, only the staff here, it'll be Ashley, myself, and Jason. We don't, there aren't direct communications with the applicant and our planner.
What was your concern?
Sometimes they go back and forth.
They shouldn't be, it's not something the town has authorized. You know, it'd be like-
But your concern was, though, whether it was properly founded or not?
Well, I was just surprised at the amount that was billed to the applicant, considering, you know, review of the application. Anybody would have found that a backlot is not permitted and it seemed like a lot of-
Okay.
It just seemed like a lot of money, you know?
I just wanted to make sure I had understood correctly.
And I just wasn't sure how to prevent applicants from being burdened with these-
Right.
These extra fees.
Okay.
And it is something that we're hoping to, I guess, twofold there, so it'd be like, you know, we don't, if residents or committees have legal questions, you know, those go through the selectmen's office, we don't allow and that's certainly something we can make sure that they're not utilizing the town planner at, you know, at a taxpayer expense, but those bills, assuming we're referring to whitetails, I mean, the minute the application came in, you know, it was a, you know, a two-inch binder that was, whole thing was sent over, they reviewed it. I think at the time, and Joe can correct me on this, we didn't have any land use at that time, so they probably spent a little more time on it than they normally would for a project like this. But in any event, I don't think, I mean, do you guys feel that they are biased in any way in their opinions or do you think they're not catching these items? Or when you say that anybody would have caught that, not to call out anybody on the board, but I wouldn't have known that, you know, if I was a new planning board member. So, I mean, somebody's got to give them some-
Anybody would be the code officer of the planning board in my mind, anybody was-
Assuming they have the proper training under their belt, right? I mean, assuming they have proper training, I mean, we do have a, you know, a deputy CEO from a neighboring town, but he's giving us, you know, three to five hours a week if we're lucky, so that it's a big shoes to fill. We just want to make sure that on behalf of the applicant that everything's done properly.
Yeah, I don't mind the support from North Star, I just, I seek to prevent simple applications from being overfeed, so to speak.
Yep, and that's fair.
Yeah, and I think there was some concern, correct me if I'm wrong Gavin, but there was some concern about having them here for meetings when they really weren't necessary for meetings.
Yep.
Which kept the meeting meter running.
Yeah, and that's a fair point.
Give us a whole write-up and we're supposed to take the time to review that, so having them there to just read it to us and then, you know, resultantly, the cost is passed along.
Right.
I mean, they took the time to write up, you know, this, how many pages?
That should be enough.
I would think so.
Yeah.
I mean, unless, unless we're dealing with a-
Major project.
Major project.
Yeah, we've certainly tried to cut back on them coming down and I think you've seen that the last few meetings. I mean, if it's one of your solar ones, I think was the last time that one of the representatives was here, when you're getting ready to maybe vote on something of substance, but, and we can appreciate that, and those meetings, if they're here, that comes out of the general code enforcement, that's not billed to the applicants, it's just the reviews of the actual documents. So we can certainly be more, you know, we can take a better look at them, but we, I mean, but we need their services and again, you know, at the end of the day, it's a decision the board, the board offers that to their employees, you know what I mean? And then we don't have a full-time, somebody from the planning board here, you know, during regular office hours, so somebody's got to be that liaison for support. But we will be cognitiv and keep the numbers down as much as we can.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we reconsider the vote taken on the Thursday, July 15th, Mr. Maloney's motion that when considering future applications, the planning board take a vote before bringing in the consultant based on the recommendations from the land use office. I'd move that we reconsider that motion, please, or that vote.
I'll second.
All in favor? All opposed?
So I think now we need to take a vote? That was a motion to reconsider?
Right.
Yep.
Now we just need a motion for the-
So we need a new motion?
To reconsider, yeah. Is there any discussion on it or? Yep.
I guess I would just ask that, you know, it's possible that you don't take any motions or any more steps on it, just give us a chance to get through another, you know, month or two, we'll make sure you start reviewing these invoices. I mean, in the past, you haven't looked at the escrows or this particular board, you know, but we'll start sharing the invoices with you if you'd like, so you can see that we're being, you know, as cost-effective as possible with them. But even if for ordinance clarification, sometimes calling him is cheaper than calling the land use attorney, even if it's not for an application that's in front of us, if we're unclear of something. They're a great resource and we'll get back there, we just need a little time and some resources. Trust us, keep moving forward and we'll keep them here as little as possible.
So we need no further motion? Is that what I'm hearing?
We're gonna wait?
I think you do need to vote.
We need to vote on a new motion?
To rescind it?
Voted to reconsider it.
So now we vote to rescind it?
Right.
Right.
Right. So I will move that we rescind the vote taken on the July 15th, 2021 motion that required that the planning board take a vote before bringing in the consultant based on recommendations from the land use office. So I would move that we rescind that vote altogether.
Second?
All in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you for that.
All right, old business. Whitetail Ridge Properties LLC, proposed two-house subdivision, map 251, lot 008, sub 001. Joe Stanley's the guest of honor.
Need a version of this sketch. I'm getting sick of being called for it. My kids have been doing it all night. My wife's been doing that, all this, all that, no more of this.
No sympathy for you here.
All right, good evening, I'm Joe Stanley with Lime Pro Land Surveying, for anybody who might not know, representing Whitetail Ridge Properties for a two-lot subdivision over here on Milton Mills Road. We've gone over the project a few times now, we had a site walk, hoping to get to the point here where we can proceed with a public hearing, but I've made some, you know, last version of this was more of a sketch-style plan, this has been catered more towards preliminary. Basically, we have the same exact two lots that we showed before. Two driveway entrances have been approved by Maine Department of Transportation via entrance permits on the state aid road. Both lots are proposed to be two acres in size, one has the minimum of 250 feet of frontage, one has slightly more, you know, around 310. Basically, as we had discussed on the site walk, the back piece that seemed to have a few people hung up, for whatever reason, has now been merged with the abutting property, so it's no longer part of this application. So we just, you know, hopefully the planning board doesn't want to see any changes to lot configuration at this point, but it's, you know, now dealing with just the front four acres. And beyond that, I don't think much else has changed.
Need to, I guess, once again, ask Gavin for clarification. If I understood correctly at the last meeting Gavin, what you were stating was that if the conveyance of the property in the back took place at this time, it was going to trigger another subdivision review because of the timing of it? The number of years that had not lapsed yet, is that, did I understand correctly?
Yeah, to reference the deed, which said that this approximately 20-acre lot, which is pictured here on the application, was created in October 11th, 2018. And that it was broken off of being a portion of Lot 8. So that in itself, the 20 acres was broken out of Lot 8 in 2018. So that's one division of land.
Correct.
And then here, you just took the acres remaining from the four, approximately four acres along the road and, I mean, that in itself is a creation of a third lot within the five-year period, and we're concerned that that would trigger subdivision review.
No, it absolutely is not. Maybe I'll explain it in a different way than we did at the site walk in previous meetings. You know, if she had a 20-acre lot and you had a 20-acre lot next door and you both had lots of record, you can modify the boundaries between your lots whenever you want, as long as the resulting two lots, you're not creating any more lots, as long as the resulting two lots still meet the ordinance, still have the minimum road frontage, minimum setback, that's, you know, setbacks to any buildings and things, that's, if you want to look at it that way, that's, all we were proposing is a boundary line adjustment between the piece where we were working and the piece next door. Instead of the boundary line being here, it's now here, but we've created no new lots with any sort of this proposal, we're just adjusting the boundary line between the Whitetail Ridge property and what we were calling, you know, the Waterhouse property.
What, do you have the new deed from this latest transaction?
They're referenced on the face of the plan and the three deed references here and I believe I have, I believe I have one copy.
That new deed described the new lot exclusive of these four acres of the front.
Right, if you two were neighbors and you wanted to keep two lots separately, but you wanted to give her 10 acres in the back, you cut her a deed that describes 10 acres and now she has 30 and you have 10.
Well, I don't have a problem with that.
It's still, that's all this is.
That these, that Lot 8 has been divided multiple times in a five-year period.
No, Lot 8 was one big parcel. Whitetail Ridge bought part of that Lot 8. Now the piece in the back has just been put back with the original Lot 8. It's, you know, this, there was a division line here, they just changed it from here to here, but there's still no new parcels, it's just, it's just the revision of a common boundary line between the two pieces, if you want to look at it that way.
Is what you're saying that the number of lots did not increase?
Correct.
Only the boundary, the size of one lot increased?
One increased and one decreased and the mutual shared boundary line has changed.
I understand, whereas with the two that the hope is to develop, those are two new lots.
Hmm.
Okay.
While I do think we need the current deed-
Okay.
The lot that was divided from Lot 8 and then re-divided.
There's been no re-division Gavin, a mutual boundary line has changed.
I mean-
I don't know how to say it in any simpler terms, you had Lot 8, that you're calling it, and you had a piece out of Lot 8. We've now taken it and put it back with the original parent property, there's just two pieces, there's Lot 8 and then there's Whitetail Ridge, and now we're here dividing Whitetail Ridge in half.
But the, all right, well, I think we both know what the other one's saying, we just have to throw it out somehow and I think that-
I think Gavin wants legal documentation for processing the application, I think that's one of the, you have to have the deed.
Okay, here you go. I don't have copies for anyone, but I can-
We can pass it around.
That's the part in the back, which- You know, in the interim and as we discussed as a possibility on the site walk, Jake and Jessica White purchased the Waterhouse property and then this is in their LLC and they've modified the boundary lines between the two properties.
I guess I don't see the difference between a boundary law modification and a creation of a new lot, really.
I mean, before you guys approve this, sitting here today, there's two lots out here, there's Lot 8 and there's Whitetail Ridge. You know, you can have a sale to and a butter from a deed, you know?
Yeah, you could do it, but-
That's all this is, is a sale to and a butter, that's what we proposed at the beginning of this, it's the piece in the back being conveyed to the butter. It's not a separate lot, it's not a back lot, it's just being re-merged with the parent parcel that it once came from.
What did Whitetail deed to the Whites?
What's that?
What did Whitetail deed to the Whites? Your second note under deeds talks about one done two days ago. And I'm trying to align that note with what you're saying.
Yep, as we discussed on the site walk, my goal was to have those deeds which merged these two pieces completed by this evening in preparation for our public hearing, and that's what that document is. I believe it's Attorney Nickerson who oversaw those deeds being put back together.
The problem I'm having Joe is you're talking about moving one line between two parties.
Yeah.
And so I get what you're saying, but you've, there are two additional deed references in your notes and that's confusing.
Okay, let's, for the sake of discussion, let's say the Town of Acton has a deed right here and the neighbor next door decides to deed the Town of Acton as a sale to and a butter, no separate lot, five more acres. Now, the Town of Acton on their one lot, if, you know, if it's a sale to and a butter and it's merged and it's not a new lot, the Town of Acton is going to have two deeds for this property now. It's going to have the original deed and it's going to have the sale to and a butter, five acres. So that's what you're looking at there, is there's one deed where Waterhouse sells the piece next door and then there's a second deed that shifts this area in the back from its current property to the abutting property.
So what kind of a sale constitutes creation of a lot?
Any lot that somebody, you know, that would have its own road frontage, its own acreage, its own access, it would be, you know, potentially apply for a building permit separately from all of the other lots around. I mean, I think people are having trouble with it just because of the size of the lot, but if, you know, let's say the neighbor next door wants to deed you a five-foot strip because your shed is over the line, you're adjusting the line with that deed for the five-foot strip, now you have two pieces, this is the same theory, it's just a bigger chunk of land. There's no new lot created in that scenario, the five-foot strip isn't a new lot, it's just a strip that goes from one neighbor to another, it's the same-
Which doesn't fall under the rule for subdivision review?
Nope, because it's not a separate lot in any way, that strip is being merged with the new property and there's no new lots.
So is it one every five years?
If the neighbor in the scenario you gave-
Is it the owner?
Neighbor deeded property over to their, to the neighbor-
Yeah.
Because they needed a certain size lot in order to move forward with the project. I believe it would then require a deed that put those two parcels together onto one deed.
That's not true at all, I've had this discussion one time before with a code enforcement officer in a different town. Again, I mean, I am the perfect example, I have two acres out on the Red Gate Road over here in town and then I acquired another 10 acres as a sale to and a butter from a neighbor, now I have 12 acres total, it's one lot legally, but it's described in two different deeds. You know, there's lots of people with camp lots over here on Square Pond that have a deed for Lot 37 and Lot 38 side by side, but it's one lot. You know, there are abutting pieces that are now merged as one property.
I don't really see what makes it one lot legally. If you own two pieces of property next door to each other and they're both big enough that you could develop them independently of each other, I don't think they're two lots.
You can't develop it independently because it has no road frontage.
I understand that in this scenario, but I disagree that you're saying it automatically becomes one lot.
Okay, well-
I don't see the authority.
I'm starting to feel like the board is starting to play attorney and code enforcement officer when their job is to enforce these subdivision ordinance.
Oh, I guess we should, we should probably seek some advice from someone who can help us and come back to this at another meeting. I mean, I don't know how we're gonna come to a settlement right now, we gotta, personally, I mean, I don't feel like we're gonna, I don't feel like I have a great enough understanding of what happened, I guess, because it's still-
Almost like, I think I'm getting what you're saying, believe it or not. It's like, if you got a right-ofway, if I'm buying a right-ofway from you, that's going to be on my deed, it's going to be on the next deed anyways, so there's always going to be two deeds with that same parcel of land on it, correct?
Well, I mean, the word right-ofway scares me because it's a complicated thing we deal with, but yes, let's say- But yes, let's say I was granting you a right of way to cross my property.
Right.
Your right of way is still good, even though we haven't rewritten your deed.
Just changing the boundary line.
When you sell it, you would be likely to conclude them both. You'll see that all the time. There'll be parcel one and parcel two in a deed where one party can base to the other, and it's now considered one property.
I get it, because it comes up on my deed and my neighbor's deed with that parcel land. So it's more than one deed going to be going on, like it, like it's going on right here, kind of. You know, you understand?
I, I do understand what you said, but I think it's apples to oranges. And just to respond to your concern about us trying to be the code enforcement or attorneys, I think Gavin's concern was, does this constitute another subdivision within that window? And I understand what you're saying about the boundary line, but I'm not, I don't feel that I know enough yet to know whether, whether it is. I just don't. And that is our job.
Yeah, well, we, you know, again, I feel like we've been delayed a month for almost no reason for this public hearing. If we could at least get that scheduled while we're working the rest of this out, you know, I'm completely confident, confident in what's going on here. Attorney Nickerson's office completely confident. I, you know, I, this is fiftieth time I've done something like this in the last twenty years. It's not very abnormal at my surveying shop, so that's where I'm struggling with it. I'm trying to understand your position. I've been on your side of the table in a different town here, so I, I get that some of this stuff's confusing, but I'm also getting frustrated that after two, three months, we're still harping on this, and I feel like we've taken care of it now by deed, and it's still nagging along.
Let, let's be clear. The delay was waiting for you to give us the deed information. Now you've gotten it, and we're, we're still not clear.
So I'm. It's very clear.
I'm in your mind, and I appreciate that, Joe, but I'm with Gavin. I think this is a good example where we do need some outside help.
So are we going to be able to schedule the public hearing and sort it out, or are we trying to wait? You know, that, to me, that's the biggest time constraint. I'm confident this part will get worked out, and it's pretty cut and dry. But, you know, again, I, I, at that site walk, I, I'd said the deed work would be done by tonight, and it is. And so I, I don't really, you know, I was frustrated watching a video of our just project getting discussed when we weren't even here, and then our site, our public hearing getting canceled. So I'm just trying to get that back on track.
How do we go about getting legal counsel on this issue?
Can we go into an executive session?
We could just draft a specific question to whoever we choose to seek counsel from. We, the board itself, we can discuss it together, create a question, like, you know.
Okay.
About this project.
So is there a problem in scheduling, going ahead and scheduling the public hearing and getting that answered in advance, as long as you understand that depending on what the answer that comes back, it might affect that?
Absolutely. I'm confident what that answer will be.
So that we try to work together and do, move things as fast as we can?
I would appreciate that, if it's possible.
He did do his part for, well, we asked him for the public hearing, so we just did a question on.
I don't have a problem with that approach.
There is publication requirements anyway, so we have some time built in.
Right.
I got, do it, we have enough time to do it on the nineteenth of August. That works, everybody. That work for you, Joe, or?
Yeah, absolutely. That'd be great. I appreciate that.
And, you know, if, and I don't say this disrespectfully, if the issue is as clear as what you are saying from your experience, then it should be an easy answer to get.
Yeah, no, I'm confident.
Part of the problem is that a number of us, myself included, are not experienced with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we should be able to get an answer.
Thank you. That's, for me, you know, because like you said, there's notices and things. To me, that's just the biggest thing, to get back on track with those notices and things, and I'm confident the rest of that will be sorted out. You know, I'm sure you guys have whoever you want, you know, to reach out to, but I don't think it would be difficult to get a letter out of Attorney Nickerson's office either. If, if you'd like me to make that request, or you can do it completely separately on your own with whoever you choose.
We'll put you on the agenda for the nineteenth, the public hearing.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. So are you all set with that, Ashley? Okay, great. Thanks.
Alright, I guess we'll see you. I mean, I guess, while I still have the microphone, so above and beyond that part of it, let's assume that's going to get taken care of for a second. Is there anything else here that we would like to discuss, or any issues you might have that I could also be prepared to, to address?
Do you have a copy of the third deed that's noted? Got the original, now we got the third. There's another one noted from the twenty, twenty-second of July.
Yeah, again, I apologize. I didn't bring multiple copies. I have one.
Next time, we probably have a new old one.
The business that won't go away.
Right. Whatever you want to identify it as.
Let's not go down that road this evening.
That, that part is pretty straightforward. Put the buffer strips in, fifty-foot strips like that. Driveways are already determined.
Does Deed tell you where to put those drives, man?
Um, we, we choose the locations, and then they come out and review them for, basically for site distance and for safety. It's kind of a neat project, the process that I had never seen until the one just up the road on the other side. They, um, they put kind of like a cone in a reflector at the legal height of the driver's side window, and then he drives down the road in each direction, and as soon as he can see that reflector, he hits it on his GPS, and he marks how far that distance is for the, for the site distance.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty straight, isn't it? Thank you.
I guess the only thing that I can think of that I've really changed much since you guys were here is, um, is I added that fifty-foot, um, fifty-foot wide buffer strip along the road. That is, that requirement's tucked somewhere in your, in your subdivision ordinance there, that we do that, and just leave the, um, the driveway openings.
And you put the building envelopes on there.
Yes, yeah.
Which weren't on there before, I don't think.
Right, yeah. No, they weren't on the sketch plan. That's correct, Gavin.
And on the, um, upper, uh, upper lot, so to speak, um, Lot Number One.
Yep.
Um, your, the, uh, green line, so your, your building envelope goes to the edge of the wetland?
Yeah, that's pretty standard how I, um, you know, how I prepare these plans. It would, I, I usually cut them off at that point and hope, uh, no one would try to bring Phil into that and do something silly. Um, in this case, it wouldn't make any sense at all. You'd be putting it down at the bottom of, of the slope there.
When your driveway's all the way up at the top of the slope, so to speak.
Correct. We, we looked at some alternatives further down the hill, and we just couldn't, there's kind of a sleeping herb right here. We had site distance issues, if, distance issues if we tried to move it any further down. And I, I kind of like the spot because I think it'll be easier for the landowner and contractor to prevent, um, the water leaving, you know, running down the driveway and out into the road in any sort of fashion, you know. You're up at that highest point. It gives you a lot of opportunity to send water down towards the buffer in the culvert. Did learn a bit of the lesson, though. I think now, next time, I would just take care of this first, and this would have been the first plan you guys would have seen. We'd be okay probably by now.
I don't have any questions.
I think that's good for.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Sorry if I sound frustrated. I just hoping to get this one through for these guys.
We just like to make age a little better. It's easier that way. It's like torture.
Trust me, I get to be on your side of the table before. It can be fun, too. Alright, we're good here?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Only leave this up so you can clip your plan right to it, or? I don't even know what is next, sorry.
Yeah, we go. Yeah.
Yeah, put it up, sure.
New business, conditional use amendment, new plan. Raising to build a structure in the pit location map, two thirty, Lot Zero Zero Six.
Evening. My name is William Plant, owner of Charles Plant and Sons Excavating and Paving. I own the gravel pit here, and I'm just asking if I can build a building on that land, because it wasn't included when I first got my permission for the gravel pit.
I just have a question before we go very far into this, which is, and some of this may precede my coming on the committee, but if I understand this correctly, unless waived, there's a lot of information. I'm looking at the bottom of the first page that we're supposed to have, that I don't see where we do, such as the total floor area of the proposed buildings and a copy of the deed.
Could you speak up a little bit, please? I can't hear you.
Sure. Um, there's a checklist.
Yeah.
That the planning board is supposed to have in order to consider a conditional use, and I'm just. It is. Okay, great.
Sorry.
I'm new.
Nope, that's fine.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Right, I think that's what it is, right? The area on your, on your plant, your shop.
First, this is just a preliminary. I'm, I'm, for starters, I'm just trying to find out if it is possible to do it. Ian, Gavin, I know that we, um, I have this hundred-foot buffer that I cannot mine. But can I move the building to meet a minimum setback off the road instead of having this building way back in? Can I bring the building closer? I don't need that parking lot area that's between the green area and the building if I don't have to. I guess my first question is, can I put a building there? And then my second question is, can I move it closer to the road, the building itself? I know I can bring my building right to the hundred-foot mark and eliminate that, the parking area that's taking up that much space. But can I encroach on that, um, hundred-foot buffer with the building and meet my minimum setback off the road? How are you?
Yeah.
Good.
And here, too. What does it say there? Over here, too.
I think there's a parking area.
Okay, that area.
Well, Code Enforcement is here. Does he meet all of the other requirements?
What would be the, um, use of the garage?
I want to, I want to use it to store like my loader, screeners, things like that, keep undercover in the winter. And if I have a breakdown or, or something, it'd be nice to have a shop there to work on my own stuff, rather than have to bring it back to our main shop.
You'd be fine with that as a condition that you didn't, uh, take on other people's equipment and?
Ab, absolutely.
Yeah.
I don't want, I don't want anybody else's stuff there. Just like the condition we had about me not being able to sell my material to the public, I'm fine with that, too.
And how, how have you made out with the, um, original project?
I'm, I'm sorry?
How are you doing with the original project?
Uh, very well. We've, we've barely scratched the surface. It just, it takes a while to, to move enough material to make room to even work there. So we have stockpiles, and it's still pretty tight. So we're just getting going, and we, like I said, we don't, we don't sell to the public, so we only use it for our own work. So like, we haven't even been in, we haven't hauled out of there in a couple of weeks. So it's sporadic when we're in and out of there. But so far, it's been great for me. And I don't think any, anybody's been complaining. We haven't had any problems, I don't believe. It's neat and clean.
Gavin, did you just hear, hear him wrong? Did he say no sales?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I cannot sell material to the public. Like, I can't have other companies coming in there with their trucks and sell them my material.
Okay.
It's my, it's for our company's use only.
Alright. But on this, it says retail sales of materials will be conducted.
Means I can, it has to leave, it has to leave there in my truck, right?
Okay. Okay.
The wells have shown no problem with the water table?
Excuse me?
The wells have shown no problems with the water table?
No, I haven't had a problem with any neighbors. I actually have a good relationship with all the neighbors around me.
Well, if you look on this under aquifer, it says multiple monitor wells will be installed.
Yeah, I was told, I have to put two monitoring wells in. I don't even have enough room to put one in yet, where I won't run it over.
Oh, they weren't in from the previous.
Right, he hasn't gotten that far on the previous project.
If I'm not mistaken, Gavin, I had to have two of those, is that correct?
It says at least three monitoring wells will be installed.
We haven't even mined enough to put one in yet where we won't run it over.
And you want to shrink the size of the parking lot?
Yeah, I don't need the, this is just rough draft. I don't need the parking on the side between the road and the building. It's just to be able to bring a, you know, a truck with a low bed in and be able to circle around is what was the main intent at first.
You don't trust your drivers backing up?
Yeah. So I can easily make room to turn around on the backside.
So I guess we should probably look at page 45 zoning ordinance under the aquifer protection district, change of use of a structure or land. Forty-five.
Get some new people here, Gavin.
Yeah.
Be strong.
Yeah, that's how it acts in roles.
There isn't a structure there.
Change of use of a structure or land.
Use of a structure may not be changed to another use.
So did our CEO make that determination that there'll be no greater adverse impact?
To have a shop there?
Yeah.
To the aquifer?
Oh.
That's our impact on sand and gravel.
No, answer the question.
Yeah, I mean, I don't feel like we have to make that determination tonight.
No, no, I was just asking.
First time we've seen the, and it's kind of one of the things we need to figure, make sure we're clear on.
Right.
Do you know what we're talking about?
No, I'm out of hearing.
So the ordinance 4.13.4, "Use of a structure may not be changed to another use unless code enforcement officer, after reviewing a written application, determines that the new one will have no greater adverse impact on the sand and gravel aquifer than the existing use."
There's no structure there in the current?
No, no structure.
That's what I said with Gavin. It says it's land.
Structure or land.
Yeah, it's just the wording doesn't say structure or land. "In determining whether greater adverse impact will occur, the code enforcement officer may require written documentation from the applicant regarding the probable effects on public health and safety, which may include, but not limited to, a hydro-geological survey demonstrating that the sand and gravel aquifer will not be more adversely impacted by the proposed use than the existing."
If anything, by putting the building there, it's gonna be taken up where I would be taking materials. So it's gonna be an area that's gonna, that's that much less material I'm gonna be taking out of here is where the building is.
I think it's just, you know, the aquifer is here. John said, asked you about the wells. I think that's what we're just questioning it.
Yep.
I don't think it's a bad idea.
Thank you.
Well, if you, and then if you look at the land use chart under commercial industrial uses, 14 onto 15, some of the possible uses for this garage, such as auto repair garages, automobile graveyards, junkyards, things like this in the aquifer protection district are either site plan review or not permitted. So we need to specifically pin down the use of the proposed garage in order to determine if it's gonna have a greater adverse effect on the aquifer that's underneath it.
The use is gonna be, you know, personal company use, not my personal use, but for the company itself to store and work on our own stuff.
About how many trucks do you have?
I have, geez, I have about, I almost have 10 to 12 trucks, but that's, we have a huge building at our facility now.
Right, you do have a fleet of equipment.
I do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So I mean, it's something we need to-
Yep, yep.
-be aware of.
Yep, I have five triaxles that hold it. Other than that, the other stuff are plow trucks and low bed tractors and trailers, things like that.
Yeah.
This just seems to be like you're gonna use it for what you, the equipment.
Yeah, this is for the gravel pits, so I can have a place to park my stuff. And if, you know, if I need to work on a loader or a screener or something, it's a place I can, I don't have to do it outside or I have to ship it back to my shop to do so.
Pretty much not fucking set up shop there.
I'm not setting up shop there, no. This is just like a maintenance storage place for the gravel pit use.
Well, maybe we should get a narrative of the proposed use of the building-
Sure.
-from you-
Yep.
-for the next meeting so that we can agree upon the use that you're, that we're permitting.
Yeah, it's basically storage, storage in a workshop for the pit equipment. And my other question, Gavin, was, well, all of you, can I move that? I'd like to, I know I could move the building all the way to the green line, but can I move it into that 100-foot line to get it closer to the road?
Right, I haven't come up with an answer to your question.
Okay.
I still want to review documents before I-
Sure.
-give you that answer.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I don't, in other words, whatever you need, but I don't want to draw another picture for you on a map, showing the building forward more and less I know I can do it.
Well, I do know that in our site plan review, we kind of, we like to see the parking lot not surrounding the building, sort of.
Yeah, I could absolutely, I could lose the whole parking lot that's between the road and the building, no problem.
Right, so this kind of isn't as large, one large imperfect surface.
And the only reason I put it in the back is because I thought maybe if I, I would maybe drive in and then drive out. So I'd have four doors, two in, you know, so if I wanted to drive a truck in one door and out the back, I could. But it's not the end of the world to me if I can't.
Right.
Are you paving the parking lot?
Excuse me?
Are you paving the parking lot?
I would like to pave from the roadway end, at least to the front doors, and a walkway to that, like, I call it an office, but it's basically a place just to keep my records and stuff and to have a bathroom in there.
You're gonna have bathrooms, you said they're gonna be?
It would be between, it could be in the, it could be in the back or between the building and the road, wherever it's allowed with you guys, once we find out where I can locate this building, if I can even put one there. Just overall on the same page, what I'm trying to do is just get that building closer to the road. So it's not, so it's not-
You certainly can move it up to the buffer.
Yep.
But we'd have to-
I'm not sure what the setback is off the road. I think it's like 75 feet there, if I'm not mistaken. Is it 75? I just want to put something attractive there that's gonna match my neighbor's garage across the street and the other houses that are in the area, so everything looks neat, clean, and, you know.
I think we'd have to, you're gonna work on the vehicles there, so we'll be generating some old oil or tranny fluid or?
I'd be lying if I said there wouldn't be some of that, but it's, we're not setting up a maintenance shop there for oil changes. It's a place, it's more than anything, it's a place for me to store my stuff undercover. And if I do have need to work on something, I can bring it into the shop to work on it.
No work in it in the field per se.
Excuse me?
No work in it in the field per se.
Exactly, rather than working out in the dirt, in the dirt pit.
I work in the dirt when you can work on concrete.
Right, exactly. And heated.
Right.
And I'd be in heated, so in the wintertime, it'd be nice to have a loader in there, in a heated garage, so when I work in the wintertime, you know, or if we want to, you know, keep the screeners and stuff inside at night and pull them out in the daytime to screen, and then we can put everything back in a heated garage.
Do you anticipate any fuel on site, keeping fuel on site?
My original review was I cannot.
Okay.
So we've been, we truck all our fuel with transfer tanks, which I don't have a problem with that.
But I assume you're gonna have a tank to heat the garage?
I'm probably gonna do radiant heat and heat with propane and have a wall hung, just a little wall hung boiler that will heat the tubing in the floor. I'm not gonna have a big boiler or, you know, a fuel tank for that, or a waste oil furnace.
All right, so a narrative of the exact use.
So basically, you just want me to put it in writing what I would like to use the building for?
Yeah, because I don't think there's much on here.
No, no, we didn't.
So.
We didn't know what to expect, so I didn't, we just want to make sure I give you what you want and just to make, see if it's allowed to even, you know, right out of the gate.
Yeah, it's allowed, you know, if you, we meet the requirements per the land use chart.
And the whole property's in the aquifer protection district?
Say that again?
Is your whole property in the aquifer protection district?
Where's the link?
Yes.
The chart says-
I didn't hear what you-
Rural and Transition.
Well, the aquifer relays all those documents.
Oh, so the whole thing is aquifer?
That's why I was just wondering if maybe that was a slightly better place to site it.
The closer to the road, the better.
I'd like to look at the original, one of these that we approved, too.
Just so you know, Gavin, that I took the original file and I was actually going with my workers, they keep the building, this is every other part of that is here, just those additional features down there by the entrance. There shouldn't be anything else different. A little bit of history, the reason I know this is all in the aquifer protection district is because that's how we selected you to go where there'd be some farms, subdivisions going across the way. There's no aquifer protection district, that's where you put all that, just so we didn't have to deal with the geotech studies and all of that stuff, or not geotech, but, the other one there, and groundwater studies and stuff, so that's why.
Right.
I'm quite certain of this entire property. I do have that line work in this CAD file. You guys will print it out for us for future use, just to see.
Does anyone feel like we should do a site walk or is people comfortable with the?
I'm reading something.
Yeah, no, just a question.
Because I wasn't part of this, maybe you can add this, the earthquake notes. Do you have a copy of it?
Yeah.
If you look at the SPPCC note 6F, wouldn't that fall into that? Having work done. Crank it. You see, about the crank, grease oil and stuff. Does that change it?
Well, we would have to change, we'd have to change a few of the conditions from the previous approval in order to-
Earthwork notes.
That's one of them. No fuel stored on site, we may have to reconsider that. And these, all these conditions are based on, because they're top of the aquifer.
We might try to revise that, no one will say, no crankcase, it can be changed out in the gravel area, but maybe permitted on the concrete floor in the shop or something like that.
You know, me and those little notes.
I'm not saying we can do that, but something like that, we may have to revise based on-
Well, it seems like you're-
I haven't talked to him that much.
Basically, yeah. Seems like it's basically an auto repair garage in the aquifer protection, so it would be site plan review. So it is permitted, we just have to get our ducks in a row.
Yeah, we'll look at it. I don't, I haven't looked at the land use chart myself, and I haven't, and again, Billy was chatting with my project manager more than myself. I was gone the week he was trying to put this together on family vacation, so I need to discuss with him more which of the item on land use chart I can most comfortable with, is use, I think, for storage type use, from what I understand, rather than auto repair type place. But I haven't looked at the chart to see. I'll give him a little bit of guidance and I'll help him fill that.
Did you do a site walk before, previously?
Yeah, we did. There was, we, if you look at the map, we walked in at the old entrance, which I believe is to the left, down by Renee McDougall's lot here. The old entrance was down here. We walked in there and we were probably in the approximate three-acre area of that. So we didn't really walk in the area that is proposed for a building now, or go to the back of the lot.
The proposed area is right off the paved entrance going in.
Right, but the paved entrance is a new entrance that you put in since starting your work.
Yeah, well, way back, we moved the entrance because of site distance.
Right, right.
We moved it.
But when we did the site walk, we-
Yes.
-used the old entrance.
Absolutely, yep.
So we didn't actually look at this area per se.
Just a big flat area.
Right. But, I mean, it's still something that the board should consider. I mean, especially- But, I mean, it's still something that the board should consider, um, I mean, especially for, it also how we're characterizing the use in the land use chart, because, I mean, I, I think a site walk's not a bad idea, but-
I would be interested in a site walk particularly because you're talking about how close the building's gonna be to the road, so I, I'd like to see that personally.
Mm-hmm. Right, see what the effect, I think, I think largely the buffer was to, um, kind of protect the residents who are traveling on West Shore Drive from the open area of the pit itself, just the view of it, and, so-
There's also a provision about the reasonableness of noise, and so the closer you bring it to the road, the more likely that, you know, is a factor to consider.
Yeah, not really a noise problem with the, with the shop itself going in or out of it.
It'd be more crush, rock crushing with noise, right?
Yeah, well, I mean-
Rock crushing, you say rock crushing?
Whatever, yeah.
That's only allowed, uh, a certain time of year too, and they, it can't be done in the summertime months, I don't have a rock crusher anyway. It's something we hire people to come in.
Do it.
For a week, for a week a year.
Right, but the, you know, in this sort of facility here that he's, he's proposing, you know, you have pneumatic tools, you're taking tires off of large trucks, putting them back on, it's something like, it's gonna make some noise.
Right.
So, I mean, it is something to consider.
How many trucks are-
We were not working on our trucks there.
Right, no, but how many are gonna be in the pit constantly, like how many do you plan on storing in the-
How many trucks are in and out of there, it's diff-
Oh, storing in the building, say in the wintertime, how many are you gonna keep in there?
Um, I would put my loader in there, and we have a couple of screeners that I would park in there, and maybe a low, maybe a low bed.
Right.
Truck and trailer, just park for the winter.
So if those would be really the-
There's really nothing going on there in the wintertime.
Right, those, but those would be the only two that you'd have to work on per se.
Exactly.
At the same time, it's gonna put in some dick, and we just-
Yeah, our main, our main workshop is at our, the facility, yeah, in Lebanon, yeah.
They like the noise over there. Yeah, do you wanna schedule a site walk?
Sure.
Uh, you can, there's a gateway, I mean, you can drive in and park right at the, um, right at the gate, and where I would like to put the building is right there to the right.
Might be on the twelfth, so then we can have it come back on the next, on the next, or-
Or we could do it before the meeting on the nineteenth.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you guys.
You have to publicize though, right?
Right.
Yeah.
How long, what's the-
Right, is if it's, yeah.
How long does it take to get this thing?
It's usually two weeks.
Two weeks.
Just gotta send out letters to a butters, or you-
For a site walk and stuff, yes, so we could do it before the meeting on the nineteenth, but that means what, the hustle back here to-
For the hearing.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if we make it a-
It'd be a quick one.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how long we're gonna be there for, it's more to, you know, we'd wanna see where the hundred foot of the buffer ended, where the proposed building envelope is, the, look at the driveway entrance itself, which is existing, um, get a, get an idea of the lay of the land, probably only take us half an hour, I mean-
Do it at five, then-
We're not gonna be asking a lot of questions, more just what it looks like.
Yeah.
So if we did five-
Yeah, that should work.
You know, if we were walking in there, looking at it right at five, that would be fine.
We're definitely stakeout the building, so when you go today, you have a good idea of where you're going.
Yeah, or maybe just the building envelope, cause we haven't determined exactly where the building's gonna go yet, maybe-
Right, there's a little bit of a cleared area off to the right, right now, where we cleaned up some stuff that was, um, that was just, just a dead area, I don't know if they had a little bit of a landing area there. I just cleaned that up, but that's where I'd like to put the building, but the plan shows the building further back, off the road.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll put four or five of the estates on the hundred foot buffer, and then you guys will be able to see where that is relative to what-
To the cleared area.
He was talking about.
Yeah, okay.
Our site walk on the nineteenth of August. Five o'clock. Five o'clock.
Some move? Second.
You wanna be there for the site walk, or?
Um, I could try, yeah, you would, yeah, I would like, I would like to be there, it's gonna be five o'clock, two Thursdays from today.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll do all I can to be there.
Alright.
Perfect.
Though, if there's any questions for him, we can get it out of the way and then on the next meeting, there's no delay or whatever.
Right, so the next meeting we'll have a, um, write-up that discusses the use of the building.
You want me, that's something, you just want me to type up what I wanna use the building for?
Yeah, and some of these other issues that are, you know, required of us to go through on the conditional review, uh, conditional use review, like we're talking about hazardous materials.
Yep.
You know, address that, fuel onsite, um, just as a couple of examples, I think we have to do some research on the setbacks on the road, cause I don't know.
Well, it's, it was a particular condition put forward by the planning board.
On the previous, yeah, okay.
So, so we, it extends, it extends further than the road setback, we know that.
Okay.
But only by twenty-five feet.
Right, cause the setback is seventy-five, and the buffer's a hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So we're talking about twenty-five feet, and we'll look at the existing cleared area.
Yep. Okay, that sounds great. I'll, I'll do all I can to see you there next, uh, till two Thursdays from now at five o'clock.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
If you wanted to come in for that.
And I'll have a-
On the nineteenth.
Probably, I think it would be, do you wanna be here for the meeting on the nineteenth, or should we just?
At six.
I, yeah, I'd like to be here for the meeting, just to see-
So you get to spend like an hour or two, wo, wo with us.
I enjoyed it so far tonight. I, I haven't reached for my screwdriver yet, right?
I don't think they were, if you just gasp, that's a joke, cause rest of the world can't do that.
The big joke was, I, they frustrated me a couple times, I said, I wish, good thing I don't have a screwdriver, I'd stick it in my eye right now. Just trying to make everybody laugh a little bit.
That's Joe, it happened.
Oh, Joe's frustrated, I can see it.
Well-
Just to make sure he's alive, he's getting on, he's been on the old business a lot, so.
Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, thank you.
See you in a couple weeks.
Alright.
So pending projects, no action to be taken at this meeting, it was Martell Estates and O K M Property Management. Are there any other things we need to?
Do we need to formulate the question to get to whoever we should get it to? I mean, I'm not even sure.
I wrote something down, um, why don't I read it and see what you think?
Sure.
If you wanna add, or, okay. Owners of a large parcel of land transfer a portion of the parcel to an LLC held by them, creating two additional two acre lots. LLC then transfers a portion of the two lots back to the original owners, but does not merge the property description of that transfer to the original large parcel. Question, does that transfer automatically merge the property transferred by the LLC to the original parcel? And then I, I stopped there, I guess what I was gonna say, or is the property transferred an additional lot?
And, and just, one of the things that kinda catches me is that when they transfer that back lot, or however you wanna characterize that lot back, the four acres in the front is created as a separate lot at that time. It's not like it's forgotten about. Here we are concentrating on the back lot, and what's going on with that, and it being merged with the neighbor, and that is all fairly transparent, but we don't discuss the four acres that's left behind, because at that point, that is, the remaining land is, is a new lot as well.
Where's the access for that lot, if that's what the issue is, right?
Well, that-
Where would the access be if the water would be made into a third lot?
Where we parked at, oh, you went there at the site, and you remember when they-
I didn't go to the, yeah, but-
You remember where they staged all their stuff, when they're logging that, that would probably be the access per se to that back lot, eventually.
Eventually, but it's not.
Right.
It doesn't-
That's within the four-
It doesn't meet the, the town's road standards.
Right, well, they have to-
I, so I, I, I mean, I still feel like, yeah, we need to formulate that question, um, I mean, I definitely feel like this is, ju- just by, they took one big lot, they, they took twenty acres out, then you have the bigger lot, the twenty acres, then they, they took the twenty acres, made a four acre lot and a sixteen acre lot, and then merged a sixteen acre lot back, that's fine, but you still have the four acres. I mean, it's at that time that they transferred it and give us the deed that we looked at today, that I still think they created a subdivision. But they didn't, I mean-
Somewhere in the question should be subdivision, does this constitute?
I mean, if we ask Ben Smith from North Star, he's very familiar with the application, he already spent, I, I mean, this thing tells you how long-
Right.
On it, so, already being familiar should help us.
Yeah, I, I think he, I would agree with that, he's familiar, he's familiar with the issue, we've got the two, we've got three deeds, do those three deeds describe what he said, that they're just adjusting the boundary between two owners? It's not clear to me, is it?
Why do we have legal documentation?
If I just change the question to being which of these transfers constitute subdivisions? Does that, isn't that really the question?
Does it require a subdivision review?
Yeah, and what's the difference between a transfer and a division of land?
Well, Joe said it was a driveway and so forth, but lots of places have lots without driveways, so I, I don't know how we, other than asking some, that question, I don't, I don't know how we figure that out, what's the definition?
Or do we send it to land use attorney?
No, I think that Ben Smith could absolutely answer the question.
I was just saying, Ben, we're, Ben, he's not biased in this at all, I mean, he has nothing to do with me, but he's, I think he's pretty knowledgeable.
And he's familiar, it's not gonna, you know, if we send you right about it, yeah.
So who will do that?
Yeah, we just, um-
Probably give the-
So what, what did we, do you remember?
Let me make sure that the fact pattern meets, it's accurate. Owners of large parcel of land transfer a portion of the parcel to an LLC held by them, creating two additional, I guess I should just say two additional lots. The LLC then transfers a portion of the two lots back to the original owners, but does not merge property description of that transfer to the original large parcel. Which of these transfers constitute subdivision, which require subdivision review? Can you pass it around to, you know, if looking at it, if you wanna tweak it, or?
How about something like, um, I'm having a hard time, Bernie, how about something like the three deeds presented create the need for, simply move the boundary, obviating the need for a second, um, subdivision review?
But they, they also create a new boundary at that time, too.
Right, they moved the, but his argument is they moved the boundary, so there's still two, essentially two lots, and we would do the subdivision on the one that has been further subdivided into two.
They were just shifting boundaries the whole time, kinda.
So you start with one piece of land, right? Is that what they bought?
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Well, we started with lot eight.
This is what, this is where it's confusing, because you start with one piece of land, you end up with three.
Yeah, cause-
Three separate lots.
Carl heard, Carl heard had lot eight.
Right, but, but it was one piece of land.
Yeah.
And the confusion lies in that, is it two lots, or is it three separate lots?
Right, that's my question.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't it that simple?
Well, I think the key, so it is three separate lots, but the, he would argue that you've just moved the boundary, right?
He was going to put, to make that lot another lot, but they were having trouble with the road access, correct?
Right, which is why they said from the beginning-
Okay, we're not gonna do that, so his application is changing around, so-
Right, he told us it was gonna be deeded to someone, and now we have three deeds in play.
Right.
Which is what confuses me, we have three deeds in play.
Yeah, right.
And, um-
So by law, do, do we, which, what do we have to do, what rule do we have to follow?
Is there a second subdivision, we know there's one, we have to do the one up front for the two house lots, we know that, is a second subdivision review, do the deeds now require a second subdivision review for the back? I think that's what we're saying, isn't it?
Which we'd even have to do before the one, I mean-
Yeah, he's saying it's triggering it.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like-
I mean, I, Ben would have to tell us.
You know, and do we, does he need road frontage for the, for the lot conveyed? I mean, that's part of the question too, right?
I think, I think that, that is, that is it right there, that's the whole reason for the law.
I mean, there's other little bits and pieces that's of subdivision review that would come into play that we could, but that's the biggest one.
Down the road, doesn't matter right now, cause they're not concerned with it, but somebody else down the road will say, what decision did he make?
Well, and it kinda sets a precedent on how we're gonna regard division of land and subdivisions in the future too, like, are we gonna, how, how are we gonna?
What is that beeping?
It's like the alarm.
It's my pacemaker.
That's a good thing, right?
Yeah, maybe.
Thank you for writing that up, Bernard. Hard to wrap your head around all of that.
Well, it's, it's just, yeah, it's-
Hopefully we have someone saying, well, no, it's-
The question was about the parcel they've transferred back, whether it requires road frontage or road access, or both.
Road frontage would be, would be access.
Would be, yeah, it would count as road access.
But that would come as, as a function of it needing subdivision review.
Yeah.
That's the question, does it need subdivision review? I think.
Well, that's what decision we have to make.
That's what we're trying to figure out, yeah.
Concerning subdivision review, does this?
I mean, I remember the original memo from North Star said that the, they should convey it before the subdivision takes place, but I'm not sure that, he might have overlooked that the, that the first division of land was in two thousand and eighteen, within five years. You know, cause if it had been in two thousand and ten, we wouldn't be so concerned with it, because this wouldn't be-
Yeah, the five year rule.
Within the five year period. It's kind of a weird one, but I also feel like it's kinda getting shoved down our throats.
Well, it's a way for somebody to just move forward with the project without having to go through.
Yeah, I mean, that's a major expense, it's not like we-
Kinda wish that they were here that first, that last meeting that we had.
Well, it's also hard to not have the applicant here, we only have the representative, so it's, and I've encountered this with Joe Stanley multiple times, is that you can only negotiate with him so far, because he's not the actual applicant, he's just the representative, so we end up in this different, different- because he's not the actual applicant. He's just the representative, so we end up in this different, different scenario. And I don't, I don't like badgering him because it doesn't work, you know?
Well, they can come.
Yeah, well, they should. I really feel like.
Tell Joe to have the whites come in.
Well, we did. We asked him to have someone come in on that, the week, one week before the hearing was scheduled so that we could clear this up.
But that was only if they conveyed that back property. That's, I remember at the sidewalk saying that, that if there was no news, don't come in, but if there was news, come in, right? Right? I think that's how we worded it. So there was no news, so he didn't come in, I mean.
And he blames us for the delay.
Right, yeah, well, it was, I mean, yeah, I think we're, I think, um, Ben Smith is gonna know what we're asking and, um, and give us some clarity so we can go forward.
I think you could probably make the call of the boundary when asking for it.
So I'll give this to you, and then I wrote if he can't answer it, then the land use attorney?
I assume so. Wouldn't that be the next best option? Ed?
Is it final, your question finalized?
I believe it is. Let me go through one last time so it's not just my question. Owners of a large parcel of land transfer a portion of the land to an LLC held by them, creating two additional lots, three total. LLC then transfers a portion of the two lots back to the original owners in a separate deed. Land is not merged by deed with the original parcel. Which of these transfers constitute a subdivision? Which transfers require subdivision review? Does the land transferred back to the original owners require road frontage?
Do you want to put anything in there about the timeline, the five year timeline? Because if he's looking at that question, that will kind of trigger, um.
Okay, so next, which ones require subdivision review, uh, five year?
Within the five year window.
Triggered by.
Yeah.
That's only to family, isn't it?
And there are three deeds involved.
Right.
So he needs to get all three of those deeds.
Well, it's interesting because the, um, the deed here in the.
Do you have copies of the three deeds?
Packet tells you that it was broken off of lot eight, whereas the other deeds don't tell you.
Right.
How, how the land came to be, so to speak. It's like omitted in those deeds so that it, which, I mean, I don't know, I need to learn more about deeds, I guess, but why, why would it be included in one deed and not in another? I guess it's not necessary to say it was broken off of such and such a law.
I think it should be if it's from the original.
But I think it was omitted, it, the, the fact that it is omitted is to the benefit of the applicant when you're looking at these deeds. Because if it said.
Maybe, because it does, that tells you the timeframe from when it was deeded over.
When we have the research deeds, we have to go back really far, you know, you're getting all the way back to parent, parent plot. That lot, lot twenty acre, whatever it was, I mean, I've got, we've gone back four, five times just to find out where that lot came from and when it was, um, when it was formed.
Well, it kind of says here it's from Bruce and Jean Lambert originally.
It's not, I don't think it's a common, to have, to have it so that you have to, um, do that.
Right, I'm sure, I'm sure that the deeds presented are legal documents, but it's, it's interesting that if you look at this deed that came with the packet, there's a specific paragraph that describes being a portion of lot eight as shown.
And these two say.
Tells where it came from, Town of Acton Tax Map two fifty-one, and that, that information isn't on the.
These, these other two just say a certain lot.
Right, exactly. They're vague, so to speak, and, and, um, I'm sure that's legal, but it, it doesn't, it, it doesn't help us in this quest, so to speak. I think it's kind of, you know what I mean? That's what I was looking for when I received the new deed, was this, this type of paragraph.
I believe we only got one tonight.
Don't know if we got two, but.
Did we?
This was the first one.
You're right, there are two.
And I think, I think there was one other, you know, a separate topic altogether. I don't know if we have our signed Iron Tales, one of these.
I think we're still waiting on it, 'cause when we, what was the last meeting?
Because.
About the escrows and stuff, they could be returned.
Yeah.
I think we're still wait.
We're still holding his.
Escrow, but I'm not sure. I can, I can call Michelle.
You know he was in the hospital.
Yeah, he was in the hospital for a week or so, so.
Uh-huh, just recently.
Yeah, within last week or two, two weeks ago, was it?
Right, well, we were expecting this like two months ago.
Right.
I mean, I'm not trying to say anything, I'm not, but I would like to see the conditions laid out on a sheet like this so that, 'cause, 'cause he agreed to word of mouth per se, without assigning anything.
Right.
So, such as the, the fence, so to speak.
Right.
We have no timeframe in which he's supposed to finish that and it, so, I mean, I think it would be, you know what I mean? I, I don't like loose ends hanging around with, with things that we feel like we've completed, but we haven't.
So we'll make a phone call for, we'll have, uh, Jason make the phone call.
I would think so, I mean.
Yeah.
Just, just to a- ask him how it's coming along, I mean, not to be, you know, 'cause he has had several events there. Um, I've driven by while they're playing and.
Have there been any complaints? Does anybody know? Noise complaints?
He was supposed to report it to us if there were any complaints, so he would, would they, I mean, I don't know. Has anyone called the town?
I haven't heard of it. What's this? I'm sorry.
Any complaints on Iron Tales?
Nothing yet.
No, I haven't, not since, um, the right weeks in the mission. Just noise, um, back.
Oh, the burning out?
Yes, yeah, it's the burnout. It's usually just, um, one or two cars saying the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
As far as.
Was it the smoke or the noise?
But no, uh, one, one of those one, that's it.
For music? There was one?
Music or smoke?
Uh, it was for our, the model, it was pretty much everything.
The general noise, yeah, yeah.
He just, he just went on about, um, the noise and, and, and the pollution to the air, the burns.
Yeah.
But that kind of went away with the project at that time, you know, I haven't had received that since, since then.
So, um, you may, did you just make the call on that for, to shake, uh, Mr. Martinez down?
Yeah, if you want to call him Mr. Martinez and.
Is he reachable right now?
I don't, I don't know.
We don't know.
But, um.
But when he is.
He wasn't hostile.
Right, I don't know if he's out or not, but.
We di- we didn't sign and we don't have the details.
For like the fencing and, and stuff like that. Were you here for that?
No, I wasn't.
Parking.
But I could be completely wrong. I, I don't know.
Well, just, we, we voted to grant his change of conditional use, but we'd never signed anything.
It's not official, it's not finished.
And we want to make sure what he puts in the general notes is what we agreed we were voting on.
And the locations of food trucks should be on there. There were some things he changed, the parking lot changed, so that should be on.
Is there, uh, a timeframe on this with the days of health?
Well, I mean, it would be as soon as he could bring it to us, within reason.
Right.
I mean.
I mean, I would say let him get his health back underneath, you know, he can't be, we're not martyrs, martyrs about it, you know?
Right.
To be fair, he was Bruce's.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you heard any noise? Any band music?
I have.
I think so.
Are you closer, are you?
Yeah.
Honestly, I did hear it, loud and clear.
Right, that's amazing.
Unbelievable, but it's that corridor.
Yeah.
That straight road, that old town road, and it goes right up, right up the hill with the wind.
I mean, that's gotta be at least four or five miles.
Five miles plus, yeah.
John, have you heard anything about the, uh, boys camp?
Um, there was a, a pond association meeting where Boy Scout board guys came, a descendant of Nutter, um, and a Boy Scout leader who'd been coming there for forty years. Um, and they're, they're forming, I don't know if they formed, they were forming a nonprofit to try and raise money. The Boy Scouts have an offer in hand, so the story goes from a local contractor, you remember which one? PATCO, maybe?
PATCO, yeah.
Yeah.
But the Boy Scouts are chapter eleven, I believe, so.
Well, they're, yeah, there's a whole, uh, they're, they're actually waiting for a judge's decision to accept their offer to pay off, you know, um, all the folks who have, uh, alleged problems. Um, and they put together that proposal for the court. And so they're ra- Maine is raising their share based on that proposal, but it could even change if the judge says no, more. Um, and or if the judge does something else and individual lawsuits pop up, they could owe more money. But they had that appraised, um, I think PATCO gave him an offer of seven hundred and fifty grand. Supposedly, the word is at that meeting, he was interested in the commercial zone along one oh nine and not so much the rest of it, but, you know, not so much means if he buys it all, somebody can buy that back from him. So there's a lot of effort going on right now to, to raise money or find a trust, you know? We suggested they talk to Free Rivers, uh, to see if they would, could help. Bernie, do you have any other?
I don't know anything for fact.
Yeah, I don't. I'm just repeating what I heard at that meeting, so, um, you know, there, it's certainly a cause for concern down there.
I mean, it is, it is something to, that the town should be interested in because of the, just the, the high stock of, um, buildings on Loom Pond now.
Exactly.
I've heard that we may have to put in like a town septic system for Loom Pond if we get too, too much further down these sort of.
I think the town should be very concerned with it developing, and I didn't realize, I mean, I live there, I walk through it all the time and I'm, it was thirty acres. I didn't realize it was thirty acres. And so apparently PATCO is already, again, I don't know if this is fact, but according to the Boy Scout people, um, he was already talking about trying to do a subdivision in there. Which, you know, there's no way that pond could su- support another subdivision.
Right, that's the concern, I think.
But it would be off, it would be off the pond, he wouldn't have.
Well, no, this is a lot of frontage that they own along there.
What would be the, is it two acres?
Sorry?
Two acres for a lot around the pond? What, what have we thought about it?
No, they're, they're in critical rural.
They're in critical rural? So that would be five?
Five acre lots, and I think they, you know, if they did that, it'd be three lots on, on the waterfront, if. I, I just looked at it, but I, I don't know what they're planning on doing, and I expect it was fifteen lots.
That's what I heard.
To the road, um.
That's the rumor I heard.
It's all hearsay right now.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's, it's Facebook rumors, I don't know.
I do, but I'm looking at the map that I have up here, it's not the biggest map, but I think it's critical rural and it's five acre lots.
For the entire piece? For the entire piece?
Yeah.
For the, the acres?
Here's Loom Pond here.
Yeah, okay, crazy.
Yeah, it's nice, nifty, colored maps of this one.
All kinds of info.
Anything else or not?
It'd be great if the town could get involved with Free Rivers and everything involved.
The town already has a town beach, so we don't need another town beach.
Who has the town beach?
We already have the town beach, we don't need another one.
Oh, come on.
Where is it?
You don't know where the town beach is. It's huge.
It's home to a property, though.
No, it's on French Street. Crossing the church, the little.
Oh, come on.
Am I right? He's been here long enough to know the town beach.
You're just being funny.
No, I'm telling you right now, that's the town beach.
That's the truth?
Yeah.
That's pretty bad.
It wasn't signed there when I was a kid.
It's a river, it's a river he's talking about. No, I was talking.
No, yeah, we don't come down, but. French Street?
Nope.
Yeah, we should sell it to Old Mills anyways. But no, there, there, that is the town beach, so.
That's crazy.
Probably, yeah, well, get my household.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, well, you didn't want to say anything earlier, so.
No, just a couple of things, Ed Walsh, talking, um, just a couple of things for the board here tonight, uh, from our board. I want to thank you folks for being on this board, and I know you're a relatively new board, and the work that you are putting into all these things that I've watched tonight, um, asking good questions, not jumping into things, wanting everything spelled out, um, the best possible way you folks could be operating. It's really good, and I'm quite impressed in watching how you're, how you're working. Uh, secondly, I just want to thank you for reconsidering the, uh, North Star, uh, vote. That's a very important part of everything that your board does, the CEO does, and any support that, um, outside of those two that is given to all this. Back when our previous CEO was here, he, uh, he's not one I believe that found North Star and started using them a little bit, wanted to use them more and more, and as much as he knew, he still knew that he needed some outside help and some outside expertise. And the nice thing about it is they're non-biased to anything, you know, there's no connections, no ties, and, uh, you know, they, they'll do a good job, and Jennifer was right, we will definitely keep an eye on the amount of billing and, you know, the work. If they give you a packet that has, I think Gavin mentioned it, you know, all the, all the information that you need for a particular thing, and you're happy with what you have there, there is no need to bring them in, you know? Unless you folks say, we have more information, we'd like to have them, so I think that would probably be the best way to approach that, so.
Probably like a attorney, too, it's probably cheaper just to call them and ask them a quick question.
Yeah, they, they are great for quick questions and whatnot. Um, Jennifer, I want to thank her, too, for what she, for her spelling it out. She knows the ins and outs of everything that happens in this building, so it's much better have her explain it to you guys than, or you folks than me, so, but, uh, I thank her for, for going through the, the process there on that tonight, but, no, they're, they're a good resource and they have the ability to make all, you know, all this go as smooth as possible, so. But I just want to thank you also for reconsidering that, 'cause, um, I think it's really needed, so, that's all. I just want to thank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second, Bernard, all in favor? We're done.